The Commissioner's Court will meet in regular session on October 30, 2018, 10:00 AM. Commissioners' Court Room, County Administration Bill and 200 SITAC 70, Suite 106. First item on the Agenda is the application of Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag, and I'll lead those. Father, I want to thank you for your love and your mercy to us all. Thank you, Father, that we live in a country that we have all the freedoms that we have, that we have a constitution that controls the way government sees us as citizens. I want to thank you, Father, for all our leaders, and, Father, I want to pray that you'll be with them as they make decisions, our national leaders and state leaders, and for us this morning. I pray that you'll be with our first responders and law enforcement, Father, keep them safe as they do their jobs. I ask all these things in Jesus' name again.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Second item on the Agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns, and I believe Jody Quimby, you want to...
Yes.
Thanks for your service on the court. We appreciate that very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. The Commissioners' Court will soon decide about purchasing new voting equipment. The investment in voting equipment is a significant expense. It's megabucks. Whatever is purchased will be used for many years to come. State of Texas has declared there's only two choices available, one fully electronic and one that is a combination of electronic and paper ballot. There was a demonstration of the equipment held by the Elections Administration and also the Commissioners' Court recently held workshop for discussion about this equipment. Regretfully, I missed both of those. I wish I could have participated, but I did not notice that was going on. The workshop discussion included all kinds of comments about comparison, trade-in value, number of machines, all that sort of thing. Other comments offered were about ease of use and something being cumbersome to use. The comments regarding voter opinion indicated that they want a paper ballot system. That's in the minutes of that meeting. The world we live in today should cause everyone to understand that electronic data can be compromised regardless of the good faith and good intentions of those operating the system. Even if electronic system may not be compromised, there's those who will say something's wrong. A system that provides paper evidence of votes should help allay some of those concerns about your vote going out into the electronic world. We're all human creatures, and touch means something to us. When you get the receipt, it's not a receipt, it's your ballot that's printed, it's meaningful to you, just like when you go get a meal at a restaurant, you want to know what you paid. Our human qualities tell us there's something valuable about that paper ballot. Even with the drawbacks, I think it's worthwhile to purchase the paper ballot system. There's no compromising a physical piece of paper. If you decide to purchase any equipment, I really want you to purchase a paper ballot system because of the human quality of it. We need to be concerned about what the voters perceive about the system. We want them to have confidence in the system. You know, these things that have come along lately are explainable, but they shouldn't be happening, I don't think. I wish they wouldn't, because it causes all kinds of folks to have questions about the system. If we can't have an election system that has integrity where the voters have no questions, then if they run around with questions, it's not a good system. So I would ask you to seriously consider the paper ballot system, and I understand there's encumbrances with that. And I hope your decision is based on what voter perception is and what we need to maintain a good system. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other call for citizens' input or concern? Hearing none, we'll go to number three, is a presentation and update of Experience Bryan College Station, Kendra Frye.
Well, oh, there it goes. The screen didn't have to tell us, Trevor. They've been having issues with our view of the equipment. I'm sorry.
That works. Yeah, that's fine.
It's doing its technology.
I apologize.
No worries.
Would it have helped to pull it down?
It's supposed to come down as soon as you turn it on.
All right. Well, first of all...
The mic comes out if you, if that would be...
Oh, I think we got it. Thank you very much. First of all, thank you for allowing us this opportunity, just to kind of give you an update on 2018 and 2019 coming forward for our fiscal year. Before I get too far into it, I'd like to talk a little bit about Experience Bryan College Station and the name, and why the name. As you know, we're formerly Bryan College Station Convention and Visitors Bureau, but as we got to looking at things, the trend in the industry was to change that name, and because it's a little bureaucratic, a bureau, what does that mean, really? Meeting planners, sports planners, they don't, that name doesn't necessarily resonate as much. So the trend was to come up with these action words about your community, and what does that look like? We went through all kinds. We went through visit, which we know people visit, but we also went through discover. But what didn't stand out with us about discover was that, once you discover something, it's been discovered, it's done. However, as we kept talking about it, we kept talking about what do we do? We provide experiences for visitors and for people in our community, experiences around the town, whether that's with taste, with our food, or whether that is with going to an attraction and having fun, making memories with your family. So that's kind of, we kept coming back to this word experience, and that's how we ended up with Experience Bryan College Station. That's what we're selling. We're selling an experience. We're selling the memories that you're going to take back with you. Our facilities, our hotels, our attractions, things like that, they sell themselves as far as those four walls and putting those events in those communities or in those facilities. However, we were selling that experience that's going to go around that. How do we make that experience memorable? How do we get these people that are coming for a conference or a sports event, how do we get them to want to come back to our community and see what we love about it and share that with others? So that's kind of how we ended with Experience Bryan College Station, and so I just kind of wanted to throw that out there and give you that little update on that. So, highlights from 2018. This is from our STAR report, which is done by Smith Travel Research, and it compares us to other communities that are like us across Texas. But what we really wanted to point out is, in this last running year, you've seen, you can see that our room nights sold increased by 11.9%. But I think the biggest piece to look at is the revenue that increased significantly over this past year. So it's up by 12.9% year-over-year. And I think that this is important, because we keep talking about the extra supply, and you can see down below in the graph below, that supply is up by 17.6%. But I think the important thing here is that revenue growth, and that's because despite the supply, our demand is also increasing. It is going up. Now, you're right, it's not quite reaching that supply, but the good news is we're still increasing that demand, and so that's what we're going to continue to do over the coming year. Now, this year, we had the opening of the Texas A&amp;M Hotel and Conference Center that impacted our numbers, also Embassy Suites. We had several hotels that opened within this year that were able to positively impact these numbers and help us to increase those revenues, but also help us to increase that demand. We're going to continue to see supply rise. We still have hotels building. I'm getting calls constantly with developers wanting more information about our community. So we're going to continue, and I'll get into that in a little bit, but we're going to continue to see what our office is going to do to try to impact and continue to build that demand for our community. Some other highlights from this year is we hosted or had handed hosting about 198 events in our fiscal year, so that would be October to September, and that represents an estimated impact, economic impact of about close to 76 million in our community. I think that this is definitely a growth, and I apologize that I didn't provide last year, but this is a growth over last year, those number of events and the room nights and attendees to our community. These are 91,000 people approximate that are coming into our community that don't necessarily live here. They're coming here, they're spending our money in Bryan College Station, the county, using the expo, using A&amp;M facilities, using all of our hotels, shopping in our restaurants, and leaving their impact on our community so that we can grow and we can continue to provide new things for them to experience when they come into our community. So I want to talk a little bit about the Preferred Access Agreement. This agreement is an agreement that was established about five years ago with Texas A&amp;M when they were redeveloping Kyle Field. We went in as a community together to tell them, "You cannot leave this community and take these football games out of our community, because our community will suffer greatly." So part of that agreement was that we would do some hotel tax dollars to them and in return get some of access to their facilities on campus, and those facilities include Reed Arena, Kyle Field, the Rudder Tower, MSC, and then the flat space, Penberthy Fields, which is their intermural fields on campus. And so just from that, for this year alone, we generated about 17 leads and what was representing about 12,000 room nights, and from that, we got seven bookings, which is 41%. Now, while this doesn't look great, and just jump off the page, wonderful at you, you have to keep in consideration that we're talking about a university campus. We can't compete necessarily for those times when faculty or students need those facilities. And so we're trying to fill dates that they have available that aren't taken by those students and faculty. So we're working on availability for the university. The interesting thing is, the availability for the university is opposite the availability for our community. So we've had some challenges with that, but I think we've overcome those challenges, and this is one way of doing so, in the last year, is having these seven bookings that we have had on campus, and there are more down the pipeline. There are still some leads out, some rather large conferences. When you add in the hotel that is now open, that adds just an extra added value to using Kyle Field or using those facilities on campus. So we've been able to really see some growth in people wanting to come to the community and wanting to come specifically to that hotel. So now let's go into 2019. What is 2019 going to be like? What are we doing? Well, something that we did in 2018 to prepare for FY19 is we are finally fully staffed. It's been several years since we've had a full staff at our office, and so with that, we had an internal promotion to a vice president position that came from our sports side. We also have a new director of marketing, Ken Dobby, who's here with me today, and he has come in and really looked at what was our marketing providing? Are we making any return on that investment? And what we found is, no, we weren't. And so he's come in, and we're redeveloping those marketing plans and strategies. We also have hired a director of conventions, which we haven't had for some time, and really elevated our conventions department and elevated the number of events that we're bringing into the community in that interest. So we have a fully staffed department, and then we hired a sports and events manager to help fulfill the internal promotion that we had with the VP. And that person has come in and already sending out bids and things like that to our constituents to bring in some sports events for our community as well. Also, we're in the middle currently, we as a staff and at Convention and Visitors Bureau and Experience Bryan College Station have never had a strategic plan that was developed solely by the board and staff. And this year, we're in the middle of finalizing that right now. So we have a three-year plan of what are those top five goals moving forward. Where are we going? A lot of that includes that new business generation, and it includes retaining the business that's already here. How do we get these people to continue to come back and bring their large groups back? And then it also includes other things like communication, collaboration with both cities, county, and everyone, and how do we become that conduit? And it includes a little bit of economic development, because tourism is a large piece of economic development. You have to visit before you ever want to move a business here, so we have to make sure that we're a part of that. So we've been able to partner with the Arts Council, with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Brazos Valley Economic Development Corporation, and some of our other organizations in the community to be able to drive some of this, and that is all established in our strategic plan. Our sales focus has been completely refocused. We were kind of everywhere for a little bit, but now that we have a director of conventions, we are really solely focused back on rebuilding that associations market. Most of our people that are going to come in for a meeting or a convention are going to be Texas local, so they're going to come in because we're such a drivable market from all over the state of Texas, and also use Easternwood Airport for those who are kind of in that outlying area in West Texas and Southern Texas. But we're able to get them here, and those associations are knocking on the door. We've put our name back out there again. We've been able to be a participant in some of the trade shows and really make a name for ourselves, so that people are asking, "What is going on in Bryan College Station? There's so much growth. What is happening? We need to be a part of it." So we've also included some sales missions to Austin to make sure that we're staying in front of them, and also Texas A&amp;M University. With all of those professors and faculty members there, we know they're members of all kinds of organizations, whether national or even state, and so we're talking to them and trying to get them to keep their events here or bring them here. Those events that they may attend in other places can fit here, so we're working with them to try to get them to keep them here and bring them here. We're also promoting and enabling site visits, more site visits. Time and time again, we hear, "Well, where is Bryan College Station?" And even if you say, "Well, it's the home of Texas A&amp;M," they still can't point that out on a map, so it's great that they can make that connection, but what is it and how do you see it and what is that? So we bring them in. These meeting planners, we're bringing sports planners into our community, travel writers, so that they can see what we do have to offer, and we can give them the experience that we want them to talk about, and we can build it with them. We've had a lot more, I think, with interest from travel writers and bloggers coming to our community to experience different things. Football season is a big help, especially when those visiting teams write about it and send that out, and then we're generating interest off of that to get more people into our community. On our marketing efforts, we have finalized a selection process for a new advertising agency. We've had an advertising agency for the past year and a half. They were based out of Florida. What we saw was not very much return on those ads in that placement that they were doing for us. And so when Ken came in, he did a very good analysis of that group. We have now shifted, and we're actually working and kind of in the final stages of working with a local advertising agency here in town, and we're hoping that we're going to build our target markets, and that is by really focusing on our marketing efforts, creating leads and generating those leads for our community. In the past, it's been more of an awareness-type campaign. Now, for your leisure market, that's what you need. You need an awareness campaign for that, and one of the things, new things that we're doing for that is we've partnered with the Texas Bucket List for the year. With that, most of who he's attracting on his social media and his followers are all the markets that we need for this community. Their numbers are skyrocketing from all over across Texas and even some national numbers, and so we're able to really talk about what it is that Bryan College Station has to offer, and we have commercials that are on his site that are, that are, we're able to change quickly and make changes. So if we want to focus on Christmas, we can have a Christmas ad. If we want to focus on our military heritage, we can focus on that military heritage and put them out on his, on his show. So we're really following his, his followers are actually adding to our following, and so we're able to really target them and get information out to them. And that's kind of the biggest focus for the leisure side. On your meeting planning and sports planning side, again, we're focused on those things that are going to generate leads for our community. So, also, we have partnerships. We're building and trying to build and maintain those strong partnerships with all those groups that I mentioned earlier, but also with our cities and the county. We want to make sure that we're doing what you're needing and what our community needs the most, and that is to advertise and market that this is a place that you want to be and this should be the destination that you choose first to host your meetings and sports events. And then we're going to increase that communication, like I said earlier, with the different, with Texas A&amp;M and develop stronger relationships there, so that we can really hone in and leverage those speakers that are sitting in that big campus there, that when those conventions and meetings come to our community, we can tap on their door and ask them if they would be willing to administer their expertise. And lastly, I want to just touch on, this is a new fund, but some of the tools that we're using, I mentioned the Preferred Access Agreement. Our hotel occupancy tax grant is still alive and well. It is a great tool. This year, we had 34 applicants for the first part of October. That is a record. We have only, we had 34, I think, in the entire year last year. So we have two panels a year. Our first panel was a record with 34 people applying. New events, a mixture of conventions, sports events. In the past, it was mostly sports. Now it's a great mixture of conventions and meetings and sports, so that's awesome. And then lastly, we introduced the Major Impact Event Fund for this year. These are two funds. One is sponsorship, one is bid fees. And the bid fees, those fees are fees that mostly come from the sports side. Those are events that require you to ante up at the very beginning to prove that you are really interested in hosting that event. If you don't win that bid, you typically get that money back, so we won't be losing money in that unless we win the bid, and when you win the bid, that money goes towards that event. It's 100% used as part of that event. On the sponsorship side, this money is, it has a three-person panel, and that's made up of both cities and one person from our, me typically, from our office. And what we're going to do with this fund is, these are funds that are those pop-up events, in some cases, some are already, we already knew, that might come up that are perfect fit for this community, but we didn't have it budgeted, so we weren't able to sponsor it or put money toward it to be able to help them with some of their events, and they're going to fall between these panels that we're not able to get them to the hot grant system. So what they are is, these are going to be your significant economic impact drivers. They are not your small events. These are the bigger events. So for conventions, what that means is a 350 total room night event. So it's a large event for our community. Typically, we're looking for that weekday performance, because we know that our weekends tend to get a little bit packed with sports events and Texas A&amp;M events in the fall, and so we're looking for those weekday performances, so Sunday to Thursday is what we're really looking for, but we also are looking for those who are willing to look at a multiple-year deal, that they're not just going to be a one-and-done, but we're wanting to get them here and keep them here for at least two years or three years, because we know that a first-year event, you need some time to really grow it and help it to develop. On the sports side, it's a larger event, because our facilities can host larger groups. So for that, it's about 1,000 total room nights that would be generated. What we looked there is, we also looked at this for conventions, is their historical data. What do they look like in other communities? What are their performance rates there? And then lastly, the potential marketing and media reach. Is it a national reach? Are we going to put Bryan College Station on the map nationally, because we had that event here, meaning they might have commercials or through their social media, what does that look like? But also, what does it look like regionally? What are we getting out just to our region? Now, for those events that are already in there, you'll see that the American Junior Golf Association is there. Most of these are the sports events, the Special Olympics, Classic, and then the Texas 4-H Horse Show, and that is just our portion of the Texas 4-H Horse Show. We're excited to have them here. They're here for the next five years, so they completely fit that mold, and they're definitely going to generate more than 1,000 total room nights, so we're really excited to have them here. And then, so there's a piece for the unspecified, and those are those events that we're not, we don't know just yet, but we know that there's a possibility of having those. This money here is money that we send into the cities and we ask them to fund after we know we have the event. So it's not something that is sitting in our budget and just sitting there waiting to be spent. It is set aside so that we know that we can each quarter send in a report to say, "Okay, here's what's coming down the pipeline. Can you help us with this?" So that's kind of where those are. So those are kind of the big, bigger picture, what's coming up for the FY19 and beyond. So, once we have our strategic plan completed, I'm going to make sure that we get that out to everyone, so you can see what's coming up for the next three years, and like I said, we're in the final stages of completing that. And with that, I have nothing else, and I can entertain questions or...
I have a question. You had the slide where you had 198 events that you said generated just less than $76 million. How did you figure that number?
So for the estimated economic impact, we use the Destination International Economic Impact Calculator, and what that does, it takes into consideration our area's algorithms and our area's research, and it also has information in it that's a national, comes from the N-Plan Economic Calculator as well that they've put into that one, and so, which is a well-known national one as well, and so it kind of spits out those numbers, and I always say "estimated" because we're, we tend to operate on the conservative side. We only count participants, because we don't know how many spectators necessarily are coming in for these events, because they're not necessarily always ticketed events, so we can't really get a good feel for how many spectators are here. So we always go on the side of the participants, so I would say that's probably a conservative number as well.
Thank you.
Judge? Yeah, Kendra, first of all, thank you for what you do. Ken, thank you for what you do, adding the data to the decision-making process. I think it's making a big difference. You know, tourism is economic development. It all begins with a visit, and when people come here, they get a sense and feel about our community, and I really appreciate y'all's part in economic development and what y'all do. It makes a big difference. I would like to get an update from you, if we could, on the, for the Commissioners' Court. I know that the cities are larger participants in hotel occupancy tax and in funding of the CBB, but we've kind of turned the corner here to where now the money that had been dedicated towards the expo complex's expansion and all the renovations that went on there, we're turning the corner here, and I think that 4-H State Horse Show bid indicated that we're coming into a new era as far as our partnering with Experience BCS, and I'm really excited about that. But I wanted to ask about the Preferred Access Agreement, and I just, it's been a while since I've had an update on the fiscal side of it, because there was a period of time, there was a rate of payoff for what that money was used for, and I just wanted to know where we are as far as what the original plan was versus where we are now. If y'all could, wouldn't mind getting that information to us on the Commissioners' Court, so we can just kind of keep an eye on it? Okay. Other thing I wanted to say is on the state, and I really look forward to getting a copy of your strategic plan. On the State 4-H Horse Show, thank you for being participants in that and helping with that. There's a desire, I think, over a five-year period of time, to make that much more of a community-wide event and engage the community overall into what's going on out here and the university with what's going to happen at Relus just right down the road with AgriLife and the university system is all good, but I would really like to encourage y'all to do what you need to do to pursue that, becoming a big community event with other events in conjunction with that. And then on the partnerships, I'm really excited to see that. Have y'all, I know in a strategic plan, a number of years ago that we worked on, when I was on the CBB Board at that time, we talked about developing a community culture of hospitality, and one of the suggestions that we came up with there was just to engage volunteers in the community more as far as that goes. Where are y'all on being able to develop that into engaging a volunteer base of people in addition to the staff and the city staff and the county staff that you have?
So we've had a small start in that already. We engage Texas A&amp;M students currently. We call them our "howdy crew."
Good.
And they go out. They take the Mobile Visitor Center van, which is the big van that's soon to be rewrapped with the new branding, but we take that out to all of our events. We take it, right now, it goes to the A&amp;M football games and sits in the fan zone, and I can't tell you how many people come through there. It's crazy. But we're able to really talk about the community, give them recommendations, where to go, what to do while you're here. It's at First Fridays, it's all over... And they go out, they take the Mobile Visitor Center van, which is the big van that's soon to be re-wrapped with the new branding. But we take that out to all of our events. We take it, right now, it goes to the A&amp;M football games and sits in the fan zone, and I can't tell you how many people come through there. It's crazy. But we're able to really talk about the community, give them recommendations, where to go, what to do while you're here. It's at First Fridays, it's all over the place. So, that's our start. However, we are talking with the other groups that we're working with and/or the other organizations to talk about building a ambassador-type group.
Excellent.
Kind of like the Chamber, but not, not quite, but...
It's a good model.
Building an ambassador group that we would be able to train in hospitality training, train more about our community, what's to do, where to go, and give them kind of a little trinket of some sort that they would have, that they, a lapel pin or something that says, "I'm a, I'm a certified ambassador for Bryan College Station." So, that is in the works. There are programs out there that you can purchase, but we really want to look at those and build our own and not purchase it, but we want to create it that it's ours. And it's more of a community-wide program and not, you know, off the shelf that everybody else does.
Thank you for that. I think that's the key to an extended success, and it was an idea that it not made it all the way, and I'm really excited to hear that that's what y'all are headed towards. Thank you.
That's exciting to think about, a "howdy" group of volunteers to be at events, to welcome them and show them around. That's great. The other question I had was, is this new Texas A&amp;M Conference Hotel and Conference Center, is that they contributing to Hot Tax?
Yes. They are, and they're very competitive with the market, so they're easy to work with. They are, and they're definitely focused on keeping themselves full besides football games. So, they're with us at a lot of the different trade shows and things that we go to. They go with us, or we go with them, or sales calls or whatever it is so that we can really advertise them as an opportunity and a place.
Great. Thank you.
Okay.
The redevelopment of Kyle Field when that was done, I remember you said earlier about using some of their, their, like, different places up there for events that we could use. Do we, do we still try to use our buildings first before we, before we do anything out there, or are we still trying to do that?
Yes. So, we put in place a, kind of a, our own internal side policy that if an event fits somewhere else and not in those facilities, we try to push those, those facilities first. And the cost of still, even though those, those facilities on campus are at a reduced cost, sometimes these groups, it's still a little bit high of an expense for them. So, thankfully, we have other meeting venues like the Expo and even some of our other hotel venues that are able to host these meetings. The Brazos Center is one. We've had several groups that have used the Brazos Center also. So, we have those ancillary groups. So, if it fits and it's a better fit in those places, we're trying to show those off. And when we do the site visits, we don't just focus on, here's the campus hotel and the A&amp;M facilities. We show them all the other options, and we take them to those places and let them see what those look like and how their group might fit possibly better there, or if they choose to go, we'll, you know, we'll work with them there too. But we try to show the whole community and all the things that are available to them.
Right.
Okay, Kendra, I want to thank you again for all the help that y'all, that y'all gave to, for the Four-H Horse Show. Y'all have put that package together, and that's part of the reason, certainly one of the big reasons that we were successful in the bid, so thank you for everything you did.
You are very welcome, and thank you for allowing us to be here today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we will consider and take action on Agenda Items four through twenty-one. Number four is Resolution eighteen dash zero one five Designating County Judge to apply for and accept, modify, cancel the 2019 Indigent Defense Grant Program.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number five is Order eighteen dash zero one six Adopting Local Provider Participation Fund, LPPF Mandatory Payment Tax Rate and Approving the Payment Administration Cost for Brazos County, and that rate would be set at six percent, and the administration costs would be twenty thousand dollars for Brazos County. Move approval?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is Request from Juvenile Administration for the Following Personnel Changes with Effective Date as of November third, 2018. This change will have a decrease in the FY twenty nineteen Juvenile TJJD Grant in the amount of three thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars and an increase in the FY twenty nineteen Juvenile Administration Budget in the amount of three thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars.
Move approval A and B. Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is Contract Amendment to Correct the Dates for the nineteen dash zero zero one R Indigent Juvenile Defense.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eight is Approval of Bid nineteen, nineteen dash zero seven three Asphalt, Oils, Emulsions Recommend Award to Martin Asphalt for Items One and Three and Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions for Item Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nine is Permission to Advertise for Bid nineteen dash zero eight one Culverts.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number ten is Approval of Service Contract with Huntin Services for HVAC Replacement and Repairs, the Sheriff's Office Administration in Brazos Center Building in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eleven is Approval of Service Contract with Huntin Services for Brazos County Courthouse Chiller Rebuild in the amount of one-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twelve is Request Approval for, of the Nonprofit Organization Application for Brazos County Inmate Work Through Labor for Radio Mash on Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, 2018, and December the third, 2018, for the setup and tear-down of National Guard tents.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number thirteen is Approval of Proposed Roden Bridge Twenty-Nineteen Holiday Schedule Option, which is the equivalent of the standard approved eighty-eight-hour 2019 county holiday schedule.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number fourteen is Acceptance of Special Warranty Deed from OGC CNO JV LLC for point five three-two of one acre of land to be used for the improvements of Arrington Road in Precinct One. Property is being donated.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number fifteen is Acceptance of Special Warranty Deed from Bessie Ann McDonnell List and her husband, Robert List, for point three of one acre land and a temporary easement of point one three of one acre of land to be used for bridge installation on Jack Manning Road, sites located in Precinct Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number sixteen is Request Permission to Enter Property on Edna May Pate on Farrell Creek Road. County will fill in an eroded area with rock off the edge of the Culvert Crossing, sites located in Precinct Two.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seventeen is Schmidt Journal Entries FY eighteen slash nineteen, one zero 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 nine two through one zero zero nine seven.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eighteen is Tax Refund Application for the Following...
Move approval A and B. Second.
Motion made second to A and B. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nineteen is Budget Amendments. Budget Amendments FY seventeen slash eighteen, fifty-one, fifty-six point one through fifty-six point eight, and Budget Amendments FY eighteen slash nineteen, five point one through five point six.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twenty is Personnel Change Status.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twenty-one is Payment of Claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County. Claim number eight zero zero nine one one four through claim number eight zero zero nine three three eight.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number twenty-two is Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population. Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. First of all, today's report, we have six-hundred-and-eighty-eight in jail the last twenty-four hours. That's been our peak. We have five-hundred-and-sixty-eight are male, one-hundred-and-nineteen are female. We have fifty-six with ankle monitors or electronic monitors and seventeen are pending. So, standing up in front of you, given this report, over the years, we've decided we'd have a better look at our inmate population. We've put a graph in front of you. Each of you should have, and it's got some colored lines on it. Basically, it just tracks our inmate population. The first one is from January to December, and clearly shows that there is a pattern of inmate population increase starting around, you know, from June to October. So, there's a peak and then a decline through that period of time. It's hard to explain exactly what's causing that, but likely, you know, the criminal justice system is going full bore at that point. Courts are moving their dockets, and we're seeing people being placed into jail. We took the same population there and just split this year from July to June, which shows that the lower part a little better because it's between November and January. And you can see that's when we have the lowest number of people in our jail. And obviously, that was probably related to the holidays, starting Thanksgiving, going through Christmas and New Years. So, courts are slowing down and not putting as many people in jail. So, those are the, the look of populations. At the bottom of that page, you can see the actual populations by month over the last ten years. A couple of things to look at. September of 2018 was our, our natural high. I mean, we had a high in 2017 in August of seven-hundred-and-forty, but that was attributed to the Ransus County inmates that were moved because of the hurricane. Our, our natural high point is actually September of this year at seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine. Our low in the last five years was December of 2017 at five-ninety-one. The lowest over the whole ten-year period was January of 2012. And let's see, another milestone is, we opened our new jail September of 2010, so you can see where our population was back then. So, that kind of gives you an idea of what, what our population census has been over ten years, and you can see clearly that there is a peak and a valley in, in that census. On the backside of that is just kind of a look at, at what the population averaged by gender in this year with five-hundred-and-fifty-nine males, general, obviously, a significant number of males over females. We had nine-hundred and, there are nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixteen bookings and nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-two releases in the year 2017. And down at the bottom gives you a breakdown of what the population is made up of as far as, you know, what group, and obviously, the largest group, which is about forty-five percent of our population, are pre-trial felons. And nothing else comes really close. We've got pre-trial misdemeanors, which are about a third of what the felons are, or less than a third. So, that's a quick look at our census and jail, and we were curious, so thanks to Wayne and Kevin for mapping this out for us, and we wanted to share it with you today.
Okay. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you. Good information to have.
It really is. Thank you. What is the capacity of the jail?
A thousand eighty-eight beds.
Hope we never fill it.
We do. You know, I call empty beds happy beds.
Yes, indeed.
We like those happy beds.
Sheriff, one question on the convicted felons. The number was eighty there. Those are people who have gone through their trial, they've got the conviction, but they're waiting transfer into TCDRS? Or, no, that's, that's big emergency. What is it? Texas Department of Corrections?
TDCJ.
Thank you. The acronyms always get me.
Right.
Okay. So, they're waiting space or assignment or transport or whatever to get there?
Right. TCDJ, after they're notified that we have conviction and a sentence, they have forty-five days...
Okay.
...to accept the inmates, and we, we will transport them to their facility.
Okay. So, that's the forty-five-day holding...
Yes, sir.
Capacity.
Thank you. And I guess the whole same with parole violators. Those are waiting to go back to state.
Not necessarily. Interestingly, most of those are released back out in the community rather than go back to, they serve time or sit in our jail while parole works out, whatever issues they have. Not, not many of them go back to prison.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Number twenty-three is Announcement of Interest Items and Possible Future Agenda Topics.
I have one, Judge. I'd like to wish Jennifer Salazar a happy birthday today. She's in the back.
And she's not wearing a party hat?
And she's not wearing a party hat, so, yeah.
We can change it. Judge, I did want to, exciting day yesterday for the community. The construction kickoff took place for the Fun-for-All Playground, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of the folks who have had an effort over a four-year period of time from the idea to actually where this is going to be built. Saw a lot of members of Brazos County out there yesterday. It was a really great event, and onward and upward, continued support requested for Phase Two and Phase Three. This will be a phenomenal community facility that's going to make a difference, not just locally for people who live in Brazos County, but for people who come into Brazos County because this facility is going to be what it's going to be. So, just a major thank you and celebration to the community. Keep up the good work.
All right. Number twenty-four is Call for Citizens' Input and Our Concerns. Hearing none, we adjourn. Thank y'all.